The January 16th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address the council on a less formal basis on items that are not on the agenda that evening. This portion of the meeting is generally about 6:30 to 6:55, and if you wish to address the council at that time, your best bet is to reserve a slot by contacting the city manager's office at (949) 841-0, no, (12), sorry.
You can call either of those numbers.
And leave your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. After scheduled speakers, we open up the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not televised nor is it recorded. Again, if you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 841-2. To start off the meeting, we are having a HRA meeting, so I'd like to call the HRA meeting to order. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held on June, pardon me, on January 2nd?
No.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is asking for approval of the revised pooled TIF note and mortgage and the revised park dedication note and mortgage for the Elevate TIF Development Agreement. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, members of the HRA. So we have some housekeeping that we need to do, updating on the Elevate project at Southwest Station, the mixed-use housing project. So we need to amend and restate the tax increment development agreement mainly for three main reasons and housekeeping. One, I think, as the mayor mentioned, as it relates to payment of park dedication fees. Secondly, we need to extend the obligation to December 31st, 2060. And third, we need to add language that's required by HUD related to subordinate financing repayments of surplus cash. So there are no other changes but the request is to authorize the execution of the amended and restated tax increment development agreement.
Is there, are there any questions? No. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the revised pooled TIF note and mortgage and the revised park dedication note and mortgage for the Elevate TIF Development Agreement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The HRA meeting is adjourned. We're back into the city council meeting, and we're going to start out the evening with a proclamation for the Eden Prairie Eagles football team, naming this Eden Prairie Eagles Football Day. And this is not the kind of thing that we generally do. A lot of times, the attainments of the students at our schools, we let the school district handle that. But this is just such an amazing tradition of excellence that has come through with our Eden Prairie football programs, that we just felt the need, the desire to recognize this group this particular year. I'm sure Coach Grant would say it's not just him. I'm sure he would attribute a lot of the success, not only to his great players and his great coaching staff, but also to the efforts of the Eden Prairie Football Association, which is a group that the city works quite a bit with in getting field time and facilities for them. So it's very much a community effort to develop a team of this caliber. And at this time, I'm going to read a proclamation, and then we would like to have Coach Grant, Principal McHarton, and the team captains to come up to receive the proclamation and have some pictures taken. So, "Whereas the City Council of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, is proud to recognize the achievements of residents in our community, and whereas the 2017 Eden Prairie High School football team played in Class 6A, Minnesota's top football classification, under the outstanding leadership of head coach Mike Grant, and whereas the 2017 Eden Prairie High School football team won 13 straight games to establish a record of 13-0, and whereas the 2017 Eden Prairie High School football team flew to a 38-17 victory over Minnetoka High School on November 24th, 2017, to win their state-best 11th state championship. Now therefore I, Nancy Tyra Lukens, Mayor of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby recognize the Eden Prairie Eagles and coaching staff of Coach Mike Grant for their achievements throughout the 2017 high school football season, and with great pleasure, I do hereby declare January 16, 2018, as Eden Prairie Eagles Football Day in the city of Eden Prairie, and encourage our residents to join me in congratulating the team on their success in 2017." So, Mr. Grant and Mr. McHarton.
Let me introduce, I can never just walk up here and I stand there. Antonio Montero, who not only was one of our captains, but was Mr. Football in the State of Minnesota this year, and Central Player of the Year, and Joe Schreger, who was also First Team All-State, one of our captains, and led our offensive line for two years. Kyler Kluge is not here tonight. Kyler is on the basketball team, and they are in Upright tonight, so he isn't here. But outstanding group of kids, and we appreciate just the recognition of what the hard work they've done, so, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a proclamation, but we don't have a frame yet, so we'll get it too.
Okay.
Thank you. And if you didn't see it, yeah, plug the trophy.
And we did bring the trophy, rather than sit in the case, we like to bring it on the road with us.
And the mayor is wearing her Viking colors, just...
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about that other football team?
Yes.
Another one.
Not as successful as yours. Oh, there it is.
Catch him.
Somebody go, Joyce. Mr. Getchow, the next item is the Cisah Highway 61 Flying Cloud Drive Findings Interpretive Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to introduce Lori Creamer, our staff liaison to the Heritage Preservation Commission, and she'll kick us off on the next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Getchow. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and all of our guests tonight. I'm Lori Creamer. I'm the staff liaison for the Heritage Preservation Commission, and I have the privilege of introducing our guest speaker tonight, speakers, excuse me. They're going to share with you tonight some of the discoveries that they made while preparing for the upcoming Hennepin County 61 Flying Cloud Drive Road Project. I'd like to introduce Jason Stabell. He's a senior project manager for Hennepin County, and he's been the design project manager on this project. And then also Steve Boyd Smith is the creative director at the 106 Group, and he's leading the interpretation of the new discoveries for the project. Please help me welcome Jason and Steve.
Again, my name's Jason Stabell. I'm with Hennepin County and the project manager for this reconstruction project, and we do have a presentation that we'll bring up. And so, some of you are familiar with Conner Road 61, Flying Cloud Drive. It goes from, the reconstruction project goes from Charleston Road all the way to 101 in Chanhassen. You can go to the next slide. So as I said, there's a project location, so I'll keep my point brief because you really want to hear Steve's information, so you can go to the next slide. So, Hennepin County led, Carver County's been involved, we've been working closely with Eden Prairie and Chanhassen, MinDOT, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, DNR, and Bowser have been some of the project organizations. And so, here's a rendering of the project. When we're complete, it'll be a three-lane section. Currently, it's a two-lane section, one lane in each direction, a center left turn lane. There'll be also a bike pedestrian trail on the north side, and you can see some significant retaining walls to lessen the impacts to the bluffs on the north side of 61. So just some broad numbers, you know, 3.7 miles, there's 9,000 square feet of retaining wall, there's two major bridges with significant bridge deck, a lot of new guard rail, and so it's a big project. I started at the county in 2013, and it's now just been bid, so I've been working on that for that long. And hopefully, we have a contractor that we're working through the award process with, and February, March, we should start getting out there and moving some ground. But through the process, we've had the 106 Group help us with some archaeological studies and digs through the corridor, and Steve will talk more about that, and sometime in this presentation, I'll show you some of the artifacts.
Hello, and thank you for having us here. So I'm Steve Boyd Smith. I'm the creative director at the 106 Group. The 106 Group is based in St. Paul. We are a cultural resources company, so we have archaeologists, and we also have architectural historians, and we do interpretation, in this case, meaning exterior exhibits. So I'm not an archaeologist. I'm doing my part to try to explain their thing. If there are questions that I can't answer, then I would be happy to follow up with the archaeologists. But essentially, the archaeology along this three-mile corridor started, there's industry standards of three phases of archaeology. The first of these had 895 shovel tests along the three miles and 76 core samples, so greater than 10-foot deep, 10-meter-deep samples. That discovered nine sites that needed additional survey. That then meant an additional 106 shovel tests that are closer in to each other, and then 20 square-meter excavation units. And that determined that there were another six sites that needed additional excavation, so there were 73 square meters of excavation and controlled stripping, which is observation of the, of some soil being pulled away in the larger areas by machines. What all that found was 5,000 artifacts. It's a very significant find. These artifacts are lithics, so stone tools, animal remains, which tell us a lot about, you know, obviously the animals in the area, but also about what people were eating and about seasonality, because, you know, seasonality, the animals and what people are eating relate. And ceramics. What we have in terms of ceramics, and Jason will start showing some around, we need to keep these in the case because they are sensitive objects, but certainly happy to show them. They are the...
Can you pass it? Can we, I mean...
Maybe, can he go up there? Come up behind? So, the ceramics represent a lot of different styles, which tells us a lot about different times. It also tells us about trade and exchange of information. What this site, I'm sorry, and then there's one other piece, is that it's not only the objects that come out of the ground, it's also the features that you find on the site. So it had 19 features, fire pits, post holes, evidence of occupation of the area. The significance of this, and this is all being written up in great, big, thick reports that I can't read, but the evidence demonstrates the continuous presence of indigenous people in this place over at least 1,300 years. This is not particularly surprising. We know this is the Minnesota River, and it's very small on the map, but the project area is there in a little box. There are Dakota sites all along the Minnesota River. There are mounds all along the Minnesota River. There's historical record referencing all sorts of different Dakota sites along the Minnesota River, including some early maps that showed Chief Sacpe or Chief Chocapi's village on the south side of the river, and the Talia Pharaoh map shows it on the north side of the river, so in this area. So my part of the deal, as I said, is I'm the exhibits person, so when a find like this happens, there is mitigation that needs to occur. That includes the preservation of the artifacts. It means the publishing of very thick documents that I can't read, and it also means conveying this information to the public in a format that is, that makes sense. So, that means that we will do interpretation. So we are in the early stages of planning a series of waysides around a plaza, like in the bottom right, with some audio posts above. The audio posts provide accessibility, audio description. They will also give us room for some oral history. And these are currently planned to be next to the parking at the Richard T. Anderson Conservation Area. And that's what I've got.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
How deep are most of these artifacts?
See, that's a good question, that I don't know the answer to. Actually, the pits, the holes where they found most of them, or, I'm sorry, that started the dig, so the phase-one archaeology was like...
One meter.
One meter, right.
They like to talk in metrics.
Yes, I don't know why the metrics...
Any other questions? Councilmember Butcher-Exter?
Yes, very, very interesting, and I'm so impressed by the size of the artifacts and the variety of, you know, cord wrapped paddle and all the different textures on the outside. So my question is, you know, we've been collecting information, our Heritage Preservation Commission, our Historical Society, our local Historical Society, and also the Minnesota Historical Society, a lot of information about the past of this geographic region. So my question for you is, now that you're adding greater information or more information to what our story already is, or what we believe our story to be, so how will you drop that in? I mean, how will, how will what you have found, how will you bring the bigger picture to the overall story? Do you understand my question?
I'll try to respond, and you can direct me if I'm not...
Yeah, because it's not just, it's not just a point in time, not just a Mississippian period, or, you know, whatever we're dealing with. It's far greater than that, you know? We've got a lot of burial mounds, we've got a lot of information about what this place is. So it would be great if it could be more of a comprehensive picture than just a snapshot.
Okay, I understand, I think I understand your question. So, one of the aspects of this project is that there has been consultation with the Dakota tribes, and they are asking, they're suggesting the same thing. They would like this to not be just thought of as, there's this site, and this thing happened here, but that there is a, it's contiguous with other sites. So the, you know, the, maybe not. So the plaza that I showed, in the bottom right, that's actually in Dakota County, but we would do something similar here that shows a map that makes larger connections. Because of course, to the Dakota, this is not, the range is much wider.
Not just Eden Prairie. I absolutely understand that, yeah. It's just so nice to be able to, whether it's, you know, another county, or whether it's Hennepin County, it's really nice to be able to sort of share a bigger story, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I also know that that is not what you were given to do in this particular project, but I don't know, maybe we could find some funding to do a larger, you know, sort of a larger piece.
I would love to talk about that.
That adds your information in it, along with all the other information. We've had many archaeological surveys done. We've got a lot of stories. That would be nice to piece together in a larger quilt, I guess.
I'd be happy to talk about that, that'd be fun.
Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on that as well. I'm glad to hear, really glad to hear that the indigenous people are very, the representatives today are very interested in having their story continued to be told, and that you would play a part in that. And we also, besides representing that perspective, also represent the perspective of people today, and you have all those incredibly wonderful artifacts. So the first question is officially, who owns them?
I know where they, where they go, which is to the state archaeologist.
Okay. I thought that was accurate, and I guess my question, we might then be dealing with them, that agency, but how great would it be to have on loan? And we could actually put some money into some kind of a glass case outside that, you know, for the next five years or something would display. But if we, if you maybe could help us be part of that in connection to whoever officially has control of those today, I think, I just, as much as I appreciate safeguarding them into a box, into a cavern, into a basement, whatever, I'd love to have it available. And this is pretty exciting. We have, we found quite a few artifacts over the hundreds of years of settler history here of indigenous people, but this is probably one of the larger, is cache, a good word, caches that we have, whatever, help me, have come, have come across, and I'd love to see it available to the people of Eden Prairie. So if we could somehow make that happen, and I don't know, I'll leave that with you, Rick, and then help, you know, connect with whoever we need to connect with.
Put it in our museum.
Could, could, and that's not a bad place, and I'd get traffic down there too, but I also envision maybe, maybe, you raise a good point, maybe we need to have more of cases up here that would actually get some artifacts from the museum occasionally coming up, because I think it's hard for people to find sometimes their way down there, and so, but yes, so maybe you'll be part of something larger here. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Jason and Steve, for coming out today. I really appreciate seeing the artifacts in person. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Jay, you have a...
A list.
...a donation, a bunch of donations, very generous ones.
Your honor, council members, our first donation tonight is $5,000 from Eden Prairie Smiles. This is an annual and ongoing contribution that goes towards several of our events, but it's one that really assists us with the 3rd and 4th of July. And I didn't see if Dr. Mesa, yes, there...
Thank you, Dr. Mesa.
We'd love to recognize you.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate the annual gift, and again, it makes these programs much better, and we'll give lots of recognitions as these events move forward.
So this donation goes towards the hometown celebration on July 3rd and 4th, starring at starring Concert Series Kid Stock, Halloween on the Mall, and the Fall Harvest Celebration. So thank you, Dr. Mesa, for that. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from Eden Prairie Smiles for $5,000 for Parks and Recreation Special Events.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Again, thank you so much. Next, Mr. Lathammer.
Yes, so the Lyons Tap, a local restaurant, wishes to make contributions to multiple events, a total of $2,300, and those events are the Winter Blast, Winter Theater, Art Crawl, Fall Into Fitness, Flick and Float, Floating Pumpkin Patch, Indoor Triathlon, Summer Musical, and the Arbor Day Walk and Green Fair. So appreciate their support with those events.
There's another whole list.
You're right. 3rd and 4th of July, the Arts in the Park, Fall Harvest, Halloween on the Mall, Kid Stock Concerts, Staring Lake Concert Series, Animal Open House, Movies in the Park, and Spooky Saturday. So that does get divided up to all of those events, and are recognized in small ways at each one of those.
Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from Lyons Tap in the amount of $2,300 for Parks and Recreation Special Events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thanks to Lyons Tap, another generous donation. Next, Mr. Lathammer.
Yes, the Lioness Club, a $750 donation, and that's towards our efforts at Pioneer Park, which is located directly behind the Senior Center, and it's to help us create more of an intergenerational play experience. So right now, you're familiar with the tennis and pickleball courts. Just across the trail towards the new orchard, fruit tree orchard over there, we're going to add some bag toss and also some bocce, and this will go towards that project, and not just a gathering place for seniors that may be overflowed from pickleball and giving them extra opportunities, and it's also a place where I think families will gather. We'll be providing the bags, the bocce equipment, also as we already provide some of the pickleball for maybe those families that want to try it out and have kind of that more nighttime activity. So thank the Lioness Group for that.
That's great. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation from the Eden Prairie Lioness Club in the amount of $750 towards Pioneer Park enhancements.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Another donation.
Yeah, this is $600 from the School of Rock, and it's going towards the Winter Blast. I'm having trouble with that one because we have, for a long time, called it Rock on Ice. So Winter Blast is the new name for this year, and then also for our Kid Stock Series coming up in the summertime, so appreciate their donation.
Isn't School of Rock in Chanhassen?
You know, I am not sure if they have an Eden Prairie presence or not.
Maybe they do, maybe they do not. Okay. Another great donation. Is there a motion to accept?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $600 from School of Rock to go towards the Winter Blast event and Kid Stock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Was there a second?
I can second.
Somebody did. Just guess.
Councilmember Nelson seconded. Is there, Mr. Lathammer, another donation?
Yes, $500 from the Lions Club, Eden Prairie Lions Club, and this goes towards our wood shop, both for some equipment and materials, but also for training. And the wood shop at the Senior Center, formerly the Council Chambers, turned into a wood shop now, is very popular, and not just with our older adults, but also with families. As the Pinewood Derby rolls around, there's a lot of kids that are there that are assisted. So the training is a big part. In order to use it, you do have to have a one-time safety training, but it's pretty easy to be involved with, so we thank the Lions Club.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from the Eden Prairie Lions Club for wood shop training and equipment at the Eden Prairie Senior Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again to the Lions.
A $400 donation from the Lions Club. This one is for Staring Lake Outdoor Center and for a puppet stage, and I was able to see it in use today by a picture. We had 40 kindergartners, and they were learning about the habits of... 40 kindergartners, and they were learning about the habits of animals in the winter. And they were, as I was told, enthralled by the puppets. And it really captivated their attention on how different animals in Minnesota weather through the winter or hibernate through the winter. So, it was pretty exciting for our staff. And the best part about this puppet theater stage is that it can be easily collapsed and taken out to other events. So, look forward at some of our 4th of July, 3rd of July, those types of events as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $400 from Eden Prairie Lions Club for the Staring Lake Outdoor Center programs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Final one.
Yes, $250 from the Dentists of Eden Prairie towards the Winter Blast event. So, appreciate their donation.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $250 from the Dentists of Eden Prairie for the Winter Blast event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you to the Dentists of Eden Prairie and all of the other donors. Our total donations, that's almost $10,000 in donations that we're accepting tonight, which is really wonderful. Jay appreciates that. It lets him keep his staff busy planning different programs and events. And that would not happen were it not for some of these donations. So, thank you. Dr. Martin Luther King Day was yesterday. The office was closed. Mr. Getcho, did you want to elaborate on that?
Mayor, yes, I'd like to introduce Greg Leeper, the vice chair of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission. And he will talk about the, or actually, I see, okay, I see the chair of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission, Sana Alisar, is here. And she will announce the opening of the application for our Human Rights Awards. And then following that, Mayor, you could read the proclamation.
Okay. Thank you.
Respected mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Sana Alisar. And as Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, it is my pleasure to announce the start of the Human Rights Award process with this year, year 2018. We are in 2018. The goal of the Human Rights Award is to recognize Eden Prairie individuals, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and youth who have worked to create an inclusive community spirit through their actions, activities, or programs. There are many talented individuals in our community, as you know. So, the HRDC, which is the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, is proud and honored to be able to recognize those who embody the Eden Prairie Manifesto. Applications for the Human Rights Awards can be found on the City of Eden Prairie's website, and nominations will be accepted until February 28th of this year. Additionally, applications are also available in accessible and alternate formats upon request. The Human Rights and Diversity Commission will review all submitted nominations and select award recipients during our March meeting. Once the recipients are selected, the Human Rights Awards will be presented during one of these council meetings in May. So, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to make this announcement.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I will read that proclamation now. Whereas the City of Eden Prairie City Council and Human Rights and Diversity Commission sponsors the Human Rights Award program, recognizing those who work to create an inclusive community spirit through their actions, activities, and programs. And whereas the City of Eden Prairie recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream and dedicated his life to helping freedom exist for all people through his commitment to human rights and his nonviolent philosophy. And whereas the City of Eden Prairie reaffirms its commitment to fostering diversity in our community through the Eden Prairie Manifesto, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Eden Prairie hereby proclaims 2018 as a year to celebrate human rights and diversity and asks all residents to continue their commitment and concern for equal rights for all persons, to dedicate themselves to helping those who do not yet share in that freedom, and to join the City of Eden Prairie in recognizing and celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. So, thank you. And please consider your friends, your neighbors, your organizations you belong to as possible nominations for this Human Rights and Diversity Award. Thank you, Sana. The next item is a presentation on the Energy Action Plan for Sustainable Eden Prairie. Mr. Getcho, did you want to add anything to that?
Maybe just to cue up Marissa Bayer, our Community Development Coordinator, and Beth Novak-Crebs, our senior planner, who are going to give a presentation on our Energy Action Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Getcho. Madam Mayor and Council, so again, my name's Marissa Bayer. I'm the community development coordinator with the city. Beth Novak-Crebs is here with me tonight, our senior planner. And we'll be giving you an update on our Energy Action Plan and the work we've been doing over the past few months to really kick off our implementation. So, first, I'd like to just remind you of the work that we've done. The city participated in Excel Energy's Partners in Energy Program to help collaborate and develop the plan itself. We, the Energy Action Team, Energy Action Team was developed, and Beth and I were a part of that. And we worked together as a team to develop goals and strategies and identify focus areas. The Energy Action Team was consisted of residents and community leaders from various business organizations, city commissions, and city governments. We had a pretty good representation of the community itself. The plan itself prioritizes three focus areas. We have residential energy, commercial, and large industrial users, and then public, nonprofit, and service buildings. The plan was approved by the Conservation Commission and the council itself in September 2017. The plan, the Energy Action Team together developed a shared vision for the plan itself and had these guiding principles that I think you'll see reflected in the implementation strategies that Beth will go in a little bit more detail about. But kind of the key things we were looking at were cost savings, feasible solutions, measurable results, inclusive engagement among our residents, education within our residence and business community, supporting our businesses and helping grow our businesses as well, and then also protecting our natural environment that our community really values. So, with that, I'll hand it off to Beth to talk about our implementation strategies.
So, our first focus area was residential users. And the first thing we did was we conducted a survey of residents to see what residents think about energy and how they use energy. And we had more than 400 responses, which was a really good response rate. We've collaborated with our communications department to create some residential marking, marketing material and a plan. And we created some new residential marketing materials that we can hand out in the new homeowners packets that we hand out and to put on the website and social media. The city budgeted $10,000 to reduce the cost of 200 Home Energy Squad enhanced visits. They're normally $100, and they would, for the first 200 people, would be $50. And you can easily sign up online at homeenergy squad.net. We're partnering with the Housing and Community Services Division to highlight energy efficiency upgrades, upgrades in the home rehab program materials. We're trying to connect with multifamily building owners to talk about energy upgrades and to create low-income housing resource material. We've developed some new resource, a new resource guide for residential remodeling that can be put over by Building Inspections Department. We put an article in Life in the Prairie about holiday energy-saving tips. And we will continue to promote the mayor's Home Energy Squad visit to encourage others to sign up. The second area is large commercial and industrial buildings. We've updated the website to be a resource guide for financing and rebate opportunities. We want some of these large commercial and industrial buildings owners to know what's available and what's out there. We're collaborating with the Economic Development Division. They have monthly meet and greets, and we want to provide energy conservation materials that they can hand out at their meet and greets. We're creating a rebate flyer that can be put at the Building Inspections counter. We're working with Building Owners and Managers Association to co-host some events with other partner and energy cities. And we're hiring an intern to support business outreach and engagement. And in fact, tomorrow, we have our, our first face-to-face interviews. And the last area of focus is public nonprofit and service organizations. We've created case studies for the school district and Margaret A. Cargill philanthropies to highlight best practices and really showcase what others can do. The Conservation Commission is currently reaching out to local congregations to start making connections and building relationships so that we can start having some conversations about energy conservation. And we're also identifying city buildings that are good candidates for solar. And we're exploring off-site solar garden subscriptions. So, we have been busy sort of laying the groundwork so that we can move forward and meet our energy goals.
Wonderful. And then also, I wanted to talk a little bit, kind of looking ahead. So, this is a lot of the work that we've done over the past few months. The Partners in Energy process is over the year of 2018. So, we have the next 12 months to do a lot of these activities, continuing our work. And some of the things we'll be working on in the next few months is developing a citywide energy challenge, so kind of similar to the water challenge, except no one will be winning a car or thousands of dollars. But trying to think through, and we'll be working with Partners in Energy, because some other cities have done something similar, we'll be developing education workshops for residents of what they can do in their home and energy-saving tips that they can implement that are pretty easy and accessible. We'll be developing luncheon learns with facility managers and then property owners and managers about the types of programs that are available for improvements that they can make in their building, and really focusing on the return on investments of these energy upgrades. We'll be tabling at the Chamber Expo in March on the Conservation Commission, and Beth will be helping with that. We'll be capitalizing on already existing citywide events and using those as outreach opportunities to get out into the community and help educate about what opportunities exist for residents as it relates to energy and natural gas conservation. And then we're also looking to partner with the school district to try and get into the schools and engage with students, because we see a lot of activity that the students can do. They can bring that home, especially with the younger population. You know, you have a first grader, they learn about energy, really simple tips. They're definitely going to share that with their family when they get home. And that's what we have for you tonight. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Marissa and Beth? Sounds like you've been very busy. I noticed on your list that you have plans to promote the energy audits at the spring.
Yep, the Chamber, the Home and Garden Expo, yep.
And hopefully, we'll get those 200 reduced price audits done or scheduled by then.
Yeah. So, we actually, as of last week, 46 visits have already been scheduled, and we have not actually advertised this yet. So, I think we'll, the 200 visits, I think will be taken up pretty quickly.
Even at $100, it's such a bargain. I had it done the other day. And, you know, you prepare for it thinking it's like a test, and you don't want to fail the task. Really, you kind of want to know what's wrong with your house and the areas where you're losing heat or overusing fuel. But, I mean, they came in, they did a heat loss test in the whole house. They checked the attic insulation. They would have replaced the thermostat if we hadn't done that last year. They wrapped our hot water heater in a blanket. They replaced showerheads with higher efficiency, lower water use, higher pressure showerheads. They did the same for a couple of faucets. They weather stripped a door, and they replaced 44 LED bulbs for $100.
Are you kidding?
You can, I mean, I mean, it's offered now for 50 if you go through our program, if you're one of the 200 that gets scheduled.
It's amazing.
But even after that, $100, you could not do this in your house for $100.
Absolutely.
So, it's a no-brainer. Everybody needs to sign up.
Yeah. And all Eden Prairie residents are eligible for the program. So, it's a really great opportunity to, I mean, for $100, you get a lot of, a lot of services.
A lot of services. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Nice.
Oh, Councilmember Nelson, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you for making sure that the city is continuing with the original energy program from the summer and that things are starting to get done and the various programs are going, because that's how this will be successful.
Thank you for your work. All right. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second.
I can't believe we're just doing this part of the meeting in the 7:45. Any items to change or anything to drop? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the City Council workshop held on Tuesday, January 2nd?
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the City Council meeting held that same date?
Some would.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Consent calendar.
Move approval of items A to G on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. We have one public hearing tonight. It's South View of Eden Prairie. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Yes, our one public hearing is South View at Eden Prairie. This is a proposed five-story, 116-unit senior residence at the southwest corner of the intersection of Prairie Center Drive and Franlow Road. The building proposed includes independent assisted living and memory care units. The building faces Franlow Road, would also include underground parking and some surface parking on the south and east side of the building. The proposal also includes a number of indoor and outdoor amenities for residents, such as a theater, a fitness center, a library, a salon, a patio area, outdoor seating area, and a water feature. The consideration tonight, city council members, is a resolution amending our guide plan from regional commercial to high-density residential, amending our comprehensive plan, text, our text of our comprehensive plan to a land use category that would allow over 40 dwelling units per acre. Also, a PUD concept review and a zoning district change on the 2.58 acres at the location that I just covered. The project proponent is here this evening to provide a presentation and an overview of the project. And then the applicant and the city staff are here to answer any questions that the council or the public may have during the public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Mindy Michael. I'm with Cos Wilson Architects, the designers for this proposed project. Thank you for having us here this evening to talk with you about this exciting new project for the City of Eden Prairie. With us this evening, we've got Lance Lemieux and Ben Welnah from South View Senior Communities. Lance is the president. Also, here is Scott Carlson, involved with development team, as well as Link Wilson and Christian Morgan, as well from Cos Wilson. There's no dispute that there's quite a need for senior living throughout the Twin Cities metro area, the state, and the nation. The image to the upper left of this slide just illustrates graphically the rising trend in the age population coming up here in the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years. The age bracket of about 85-plus is oftentimes the demographic that you see in buildings such as this. And to the right is just some stats from, provided from the Met Council for our region, stating that between the years of 2010 and 2030, the number of people aged 65 and better is going to double. And by 2040, 1 in 3 residents within the Twin Cities metro area will be aged 65 and better. South View Senior Living has been owning and operating buildings throughout the Twin Cities metro area for over 12 years. They've got 11 buildings in the area that they currently own and operate. And about almost half of them, Cos Wilson has been fortunate enough to be a partner in, in designing those buildings. And in owning and operating the buildings, they're really interested in the long-term sustainability and operations of the building. They're not just a developer that comes and hires someone else to manage the building for them. They're in it, they're in it for the long run. We've held a neighborhood meeting with the adjacent neighbors, many of which were very much in support of the projects, thought this was a great partner and neighbor to have next to them. Several of them came out to speak at the public hearing at the Planning Commission. And throughout this process, we've worked with city staff to work on the right-of-way accommodations for Medcomb Boulevard on the south side of the site, and also working through the comments that city planning staff and engineering staff have had throughout the process. To orient ourselves to the site just real quickly, graphically, as noted, this is on the southeast, or excuse me, southwest corner of Franlow Road and Prairie Center Drive. And this site really is kind of a transition zone between the commercial development that's surrounding it and the residential developments to the south. The site itself has set, set for quite some years, not being redeveloped, as there's been a lot of development around it, with some single-family homes just currently on the site. And it's been that way for a number of reasons. One And it's been that way for a number of reasons, one being that it's a very challenging site in and of itself. There's a lot of topography change on the site. There's about 40 feet of elevation change across the site in certain areas. There's, the shape of it and the size of it is a little bit unusual, and as well, it has limited vehicular access, really the only spot being along Franlow Road where we're showing the proposed access site, which also happens to be also the high point of the site. So getting then down into the site requires some length of drive to do so. And we'll get into that a little bit later. As noted before, the proposed building is five stories, 116 units, 32 of which are memory care, 44 independent, and 40 assisted living units. Within the proposed density, it's also proposed to include a total of 12 affordable units. And these affordable units are made possible through the density that we're requesting. The project is not requiring, or requesting any public funds, is not pursuing any tax credits of any sort, it's just part of the project that we're proposing this. In a quick tour of the building, as noted, we've got a full garage of underground parking included within the building. Generally, this is reserved for residents and staff use, with the surface parking being largely reserved for visitor use. Moving up through the building, the first floor plan is to the right in this slide. Everything you see in blue is part of the 16-unit memory care household. The green area in the middle are a few resident units, and then the common area amenities to the north in the yellow include a commercial kitchen, private dining room, two-story dining space, a pub, and a little cafe space, along with a grand two-story entry lobby. Moving up through the building, on second floor, you've got another household of 16 memory care units with another grouping of units outside of that for assisted and independent, and some more common area space to the north, including the community room, library, fitness, theater, and salon. Floors third through fifth all stack with the same type of units moving up through the building. Around the exterior of the building, we've used a bunch of high-quality materials and really treated this as foresighted architecture. There is no backside to the building, so every face gets the same application of materials and architectural articulation. We've included a combination of colored architectural masonry, cultured stone, and fiber cement board siding in the panel, and as well with lap siding. These are just a few additional elevations showing their articulation and material use around the building. And this is just a detailed slide, kind of showing some of those items a little bit closer up in detail, showing the articulation of the pattern in the spec brick, the cultured stone pattern, and some of the details there, showing the kind of warm neutral palette in the siding colors as well. This is a rendering along Franlow Road, showing kind of what you'd see approaching the site from kind of the vehicular entrance as you kind of come down and into the site. There's a covered port cochere where residents can be picked up and dropped off out of the elements and the weather. And as you can see, many of the resident units have decks included for their own personal outdoor enjoyment. Whoop, excuse me, got a little fast with the clicker there. Skipped quite a few forward. Okay, excuse me. This is a rendering shown from Prairie Center Drive, showing the water feature kind of in the foreground. Behind that would be a patio space off the two-story dining room, and just to the left of that is an outdoor seating area with grilling and fire pit. Back to the further corner, that kind of two-story element you see back there is the common areas for the memory care units, and off of the first-floor memory care unit, there's also a private deck there. As we move forward in design, all the buildings that we've done with South View Senior Living has gone through the Excel EDA program, so we'll be looking to optimize all of our energy efficiency measures, looking at everything from window selection and wall insulation through to energy-efficient LED lighting, efficient mechanical systems, occupancy sensors, and that sort of thing. Additionally, as just best practices, we often will specify certain levels of construction waste management through construction recycling, looking at low or no VOC adhesives and paint materials and such like that. This is, as I mentioned, the site is a challenging site in itself, and as such, we needed to request a few waivers, one of which being a request for the density increase. As noted, the staff has come up with the great idea of creating a new zoning category that would allow for a little bit more density on this site. We are a little bit over the 40 dwelling units per acre that are allowed within the RM 2.5 zoning district, and we currently come in at 43 units per acre. There are a few spots where we kind of get into, due to the shape of the site, a few setback encroachments, one being kind of at the inside corner of the building and site, kind of highlighted in blue there. On the southwest corner, we've also got a little bit of an encroachment on the setback there, largely in response to the allocation of right-of-way for Medcom Boulevard extension. We've also got a parking encroachment on the Franlow side, kind of where that parking area overlaps the red zone, which is vacated portion that's being put back to the site. And I believe we've got a little bit of parking encroachment on the south side, as well with the adjacency of the parking drive and parking stalls adjacent to the Medcom Boulevard One of the other waivers that we are requesting has to do with parking. The RM 2.5 zoning district is really geared towards multifamily housing and not so much as senior housing. There isn't really a good zoning category that addresses the needs of senior housing because it really lives very differently from a multifamily housing. What we've provided or proposed with this proposal is 37 surface stalls, again, primarily for visitors, and then 70 below-grade parking stalls for staff and residents, totaling 107 parking stalls at a density ratio, or parking ratio, 0.92 stalls per unit. We feel this is quite adequate for this type of building, and as you can see with the data provided for both Summit Place and Prairie Bluffs, they're at about 0.8 stalls per unit, so we feel confident that this is acceptable and would work very well. Another waiver that we've requested is a slight adjustment to parking drive aisle width from 25 feet down to 24 feet, and then the parking stall dimensions going down from 19 feet in length to 18 feet in length. These are dimensions that are quite common in other municipalities, and we've been told by staff have been approved on similar projects in the city of Eden Prairie. Another waiver that we are requesting is that of height. Again, the RM 2.5 zoning district has a height limit of 45 feet. We are a bit taller than that, at heights ranging between 63'6" and 66'8", but also taking into account the topography of the site, we actually kind of sit down in the landscape quite a bit. This is showing kind of some cross-sections cutting through the library down to Joiner Way Strip Mall, and then the other direction kind of through the condo building to the south, and then again towards the kind of northwest, showing that we're actually about on par with the condo building to the south when you take into accommodation the topography change, and we're actually elevationally, geodectically lower than the Eden Prairie Another waiver that we've applied for is the tree replacement and open space requirements. As you can see from the included landscaping plan here, we've really driven to provide a very robust landscape package, but there are quite a few large trees on the site as it is. Many of them are actually ash trees. But we've really done, driven to provide as much as we can within the site that we've got, and provide also as much outdoor amenity space as we can for the residents, including kind of just to the northeast corner of the building, grilling and outdoor fire pit area, a patio off of that dining space that indoor and outdoor dining can be accommodated, and then also the private deck off of the memory care, and also the private resident decks as well throughout the building. It's been shown pretty consistently amongst all the senior living providers that we've worked with, that across the board, senior living projects such as this really draw from a fairly small radius, often maybe two to three miles. So I welcome your questions and thank you for your consideration of this project, and invite you to help keep the senior residents of Eden Prairie in the community that they so love. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. I appreciate the expansion on the sustainability components because on the staff report of December 6th, that was pretty scanty, so it's nice to see those listed. One of the things that wasn't addressed today, and I think it's referenced in the reports, is a possible charging station.
Yeah, and that's something that we certainly have talked about, and Lance feels comfortable including in the project.
Yeah, love to see that. Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Are these all rental, or are some of these owned units?
These will all be rental.
Okay. Are, will there be a bus where people can not have to have a car and, where they'll take them to a medical facility or then close to the library, but some of your residents might not be able to walk, or will there be something so they don't have to have a car then?
Yeah, that's been typical on other projects, and Lance's nodding as yes that confirmed that that would be available.
And also, I took a certain amount of time looking through, you know, the trees and flowers and stuff, and I was happy to see things that were blooming from spring through fall. So a fair amount of thought had gone into that to make sure that you had a wide diversity of colored plants, which I liked a lot.
Thank you.
Spent a good hour with a magnifying glass going through all the little.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Yeah, I just have a question for you.
Sure.
And I could have missed something about the elevations. So my question is, why would there not be some kind of a connection at the back of the site, so that would be the southwest portion of the site that would access Medcom Boulevard?
As far as pedestrian access or a vehicular access?
Well, I mean, I was thinking pedestrian, and that's where the memory care area is. That was my one worry about that, but it's so close, and there's so many healthcare buildings, you know, on that corner.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, maybe it's just too far to walk, I'm not sure. Or, or even, or even if there was some kind of access. I don't know, I'm just curious as to why it wasn't considered, or if it was.
It wasn't really pushed on largely due to topography change issues, but it was, I guess it would be maybe something that we could look at. There's quite a bit of steep grade in that area.
Is it too steep? Okay, yeah, that's what I wondered.
I mean, you'd probably end up getting quite a bit of stairs, and we didn't want to encroach on the right-of-way that was being provided for Medcom.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay, I wondered about that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
Councilmember Case.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, and regarding this road right-of-way. Originally, when I walked the property, I was actually inclined not to need Medcom right-of-way to extend in there. So I'm glad that staff was creative and worked with you and that you were, your project was willing to slide a little bit to the south on the, I don't even know my directions there, west side or something, and then on the east side to slide it more toward your property or something. But originally, originally, I was thinking if that right-of-way was not there, what could a walking bike trail instead, because we've always talked about joining neighborhoods, and it would address exactly what you just said, Cherry. So now that the right-of-way road is there, is there no plan at all for bike trail, walking trail, and could, could a trail be there? I mean, that Medcom road likely will never be built, but I mean, it will be long gone, and if it is, it's fine. But, so nonetheless, I'm thinking indefinitely, 15, 20 years out, could a walking trail be put in now that would connect those neighborhoods and allow what, exactly what you're saying, Cherry, access to all the medical facilities? So that's my question. I have three, so don't.
Can I say something?
Sure.
It's, piggybacking with Ron. I mean, we even have bike racks at the Taco Bell, because this is what we're trying to do, is encourage people to be healthy and get out and walk and ride and do whatever they can. So I mean, even the Taco Bell, which is right on that Joiner Way. So that's why it seems that any kind of, yes, would be, it's what we've been trying to do. I don't know if it's possible. That's why I was bringing it up, to see if there was a way we could do that, because we are looking for it really in every development that we look at.
Ms. Alves?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, maybe I can just jump in. Ideally, the opportune time to do that is when Medcom Boulevard is extended, because it comes with a lot of grading, there's tree impacts, so there's no doubt, that's the best time to do it. I think if the developer were to move forward with some type of a path now, it's going to involve a lot of work. I don't know the cost, but my guess is it's going to be quite expensive. And it'll probably be infrastructure that gets ripped out when we someday build Eden Prairie, or, excuse me, Medcom Boulevard.
It's not good.
I'm okay not doing, I just thought if it was possible to connect now, because I kind of don't believe Medcom's going to be built any time within my lifetime, and so I was hoping some kind of a connector. But I'm fine not, but my, I guess my second follow-up question to that is, and I may have the answer myself to this, but is that area where Medcom someday will go, is that going to all be graded necessary because of the parking on the north side in the building? And if not, there are a couple really big old trees toward the property line. So then my thought is, could they be taken down by a city council 20 years down the way when Medcom, which I don't think is ever going to get built, actually gets built? And so in the temporary short term of 20 to 30 to 100 years, could the trees stay there? That's, but maybe because of grading, they can't, so I guess I'm asking.
The heritage trees that are right along that area, we've done a lot of work looking at the grading to try and save those. I think there's at least two or three immediately adjacent right there, and those will be preserved.
So they're not actually in the potential future right-of-way?
I don't believe so. They're either right next to it.
I thought they were.
Oh, they're right.
So that's my point. If they are, can they stay? Okay, fantastic, and then be taken down someday when Medcom, which I don't think is ever going to get built, actually does get built.
Say it again, Ron.
Sure.
What you thought?
But anyway, that's great news. Because those are some really nice heritage trees. And why take them down if we don't need to for tentative? Perfect. And then my final question then has to do with the affordable housing component. The words elderly waiver have not been used, but is that what we're talking about when we're talking about affordable housing in a senior building?
Lance, do you want to address this in any detail?
The answer is yes.
Okay. So these are, these are 12 units that will have an elderly waiver component. Is there a, is there a continuum or a gradation of elderly waiver, meaning certain levels of subsidy, or is it all or nothing, we'll take these 12 units, and whoever moves into them will be allowed, you know, they'll come in without the funds and we'll allow them to stay forever, or is there a subsidization, you know, gradation that occurs?
Trying to think of how to answer that. Individuals qualify for elderly waiver essentially when their assets are reduced down to $3,000.
Right.
And then there's a case mix system that the county or the state uses to figure out what rate that they're paid upon.
Okay.
And their monthly rent for the apartment, is it $891, $893? $893 a month.
Yeah, and some of us that are gray-haired up here have been through this enough that I do have, I guess sadly, a lot of, a fair amount of knowledge about this. But I guess my question, if I was owner of a building, and some, I'm assuming people get qualified in.
Correct.
And so therefore, there might be a person, I'm going to make numbers up here, but has $50,000 and is 82 years old, and you're guessing that they'll have eight years of payment, and then you will take over, and then there's other people come in with one year of assets. And so that's where I'm thinking, is there like a continuum where you would, you know, take in a certain amount of people that have no assets right-of-way, and a certain amount of people that would last five years, and that kind of a thing?
Initially, we'll take the 12, up to 12 individuals potentially that could qualify right-of-way for elderly waiver, and then typically people in the building, as they age, they run out of assets, but we'll always maintain.
Got it, perfect. You answered it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You don't kick anybody out.
Well, that, in those 12 units, absolutely, yeah, right.
No, we don't.
No.
Thank you.
Good.
Any other questions?
I just had a, I was just gonna, wondering about, what is the mix? Do you have, you have memory care, how many, what's the mix between independent, assisted, and memory care?
There are two households of 16 in the memory care for a total of 32, then 44 independent units and 40 assisted.
Great. Well, very, very nice mix, and we're really looking forward to the project.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? This is a public hearing, is there anyone from, whoops. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this development? If you'd come to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers and
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, and thank you for this time this evening. My name is Terry Brown, and my address is 11896 Jermaine Terrace in Eden Prairie. I'm also the owner of unit 106 in the Eden Hills condominium building at 8500 Franlow Road, which is adjacent to the proposed development project where my disabled daughter resides. I'd like to advise the council upfront that I am not opposed to the development project proposed by Southview Senior Communities. I believe this residential project is consistent and compatible with the existing developments in this area, especially the area to the south of this project along Franlow Road, which is completely residential. Additionally, from what I have heard from the Southview organization in prior meetings, and subsequently read about their operations, I believe they will be a good neighbor to Eden Hills. However, as we've, you guys have taken all my bluster away with your discussion around the trees, there are a few things that do stand out for me in this project, and the extension of Medcom Boulevard through this area, that I think are inconsistent with city's land use objectives and the city's major center area study guidelines. First, as you know, the two of the land parcels that are proposed in this project are heavily wooded, natural land sites that contain well over 150 trees, many of which are mature, and some are heritage, as has been discussed, as defined in section 11.55 of the city code. The remaining parcel with an existing building and landscaped area also contains many mature trees. With the proposed development project and the city's anticipated plan to extend Medcom Boulevard, the vast majority, if not all, of the mature trees will be removed. Happy to hear that they're going to try to save a few of those in the process in the short term. This action appears to conflict with the language in Chapter 11 of the city code under land use regulation objectives that states to safeguard and enhance the appearance of the city, including natural amenities of hills, woods, lakes, and ponds. Additionally, the major center area study states open spaces and amenities supported by public and private resources are needed to make the town's center area and major center area livable, attractive, and a success over the next 25 years. With approval of this project in its current form and the Medcom Boulevard extension, the city will be eliminating the last remaining natural wooded area within the major center area. Beyond the apparent conflict with city's stated objectives, the removal of this entire wooded area to accommodate the Southview project and the Medcom Boulevard extension will eliminate the benefit that the roughly 200 trees in this area provides, which is reducing the air pollution effect created by more than, by the more than 12,000 vehicles that pass through this area each day. Second, specific to the Medcom Boulevard extension, the city land use objectives include foster a harmonious, convenient, workable relationship between land uses, to promote a safe and effective traffic circulation system, to protect and enhance real property values, to safeguard and enhance the appearance of the city, including natural amenities of hills, woods, lakes, and ponds. Madam Mayor and council members, if the city chooses to build Medcom, the Medcom Road extension through this area, it will violate all of the aforementioned city land use objectives. Placing a roadway within 50 feet of a residential building, increasing traffic in a residential area does not promote a harmonious environment, will create more safety issues, will reduce property values, and does not safeguard the city's natural habitat. It's my understanding the Southview Communities organization was required to reconfigure their original building site plans and commit land for the Medcom Boulevard extension in order to gain approval from city agencies for their project. If the project was approved as originally submitted and without the Medcom Boulevard extension, a number of trees on this property could be saved, and the conflicts with city land use objectives could be avoided. I respectfully ask that you carefully consider these points in your decision regarding the final development plans for the Southview project and the Medcom Boulevard extension. Thank you for allowing me this time tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Peter Westerhouse, and I represent Mariana Scottus LLC, which is the legal entity that owns the two southern parcels of the property. My brother John, who's also in the audience, and I are the only two owners of that LLC. We've owned those parcels since 2000, and brought, bought the party, or bought the property from my parents, who had a house on it in 1960. We grew up on the property, and in fact, graduated and played football with Principal McCarty.
No, no kidding.
Unfortunately, we did not win one of those state titles, but I'm familiar with the area, is the point. We also own a business in Eden Prairie since 1990, and have 35 employees, a pleasure...
Visited, yeah.
You've visited?
You were one of our first meet and greets.
Great, we appreciate that outreach to the business community, so thank you. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the developer, Southview Senior Communities. Southview has an excellent experience and integrity, and they do what they say they'll do. This is the 10th serious developer we've worked with for this property in the 17 years we've owned it, and we've had others, dozens of others actually nibble at it. So we know it's a highly desirable property in our downtown. But obviously, as has been said, it has challenges, and those are slope, trees, pondings, everything that's been mentioned. But in our experience, far and away, the biggest challenge is Medcom Boulevard, and the variable of Medcom Boulevard. I think I can say that we are confused and very concerned by the city's position on Medcom, which was drawn in some 40 years ago. It has been a cloud over the property that entire time, including as it passed my parents' house, and wondering, wondering what would it become, and when. So we understand that neighbors and future owners would have that same concern over that cloud. It raises three questions that we'd like to pose to you tonight. Why does the city want it, given declining traffic, enormous expense, and the environmental impact? Two, why was Medcom required for a project we brought forward last year, but after study, the city backed down from building it? And three, now with this project, why does the city require right-of-way for this without hard evidence it's needed or ever will be? We request that the city not require Medcom right-of-way, or at a minimum, turn it into a walking bike path, as been mentioned, for the pleasure of Eden Prairie residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to testify here? Okay, hearing done, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Could we just close the public hearing?
Yeah, we'll just make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Discussion, Mr. Case, you have your light on.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this long, I'm ready to vote for this this evening. I just wanted to say that I, I too struggled with many of the feelings that both people that came to speak had, and when I walked the property, I, I mean, I had the sense that it clearly is a high-density residential property. It's no longer, you know, single-family homes. And that being said, then, whatever goes in there will take the trees out. And this looks like a great project to put a lot of trees back in. Medcom, as I've noted, tonight I have serious, which I don't believe is going to be built. Did you get that?
I can.
I have serious questions about the need for it, but I'm going to completely defer to the fact that staff and the developer came to agreement. So I'm pleased, and I will go forward with, you know, the idea that if it needs to get built someday, a future council, probably none of us, will deal with whatever public reaction at the time that brings out, and they'll face that. But I'm happy for what's been negotiated, and I think this is a really good project for this small parcel that will be a benefit and an amenity to the city. So I'm, but I empathize completely. We're tree lovers, I mean, absolutely, I'm saddened with tree loss, but sometimes it has to be, and then the mitigation attempts are, I think, are really good in this case. And if we can save a couple heritage trees for a decade, or more, forever, because a road will never get built, then that's a really good thing.
All right. Mr. Ellis, do you have anything you want to add to any of those questions at the end?
Madam Mayor, I can try to address those. You know, I just want to reiterate, tonight we're just talking about the right-of-way, and we've talked about right-of-way for Medcom Boulevard for years, maybe decades. So it preserves that opportunity, because never's a long time. And you look at that property off Joiner Way, Medcom Boulevard, it's aged, it's a little tired, but there's an opportunity there to do something nice, something elevate nice, where you have mixed use, you have a lot of density, something to be very attractive for Eden Prairie. And if you don't preserve this opportunity for access, you're going to hamstring yourself in trying to approve a project like that, because you will have access, we will have access problems at some point in the future on Flying Cloud Drive and on Prairie Center Drive. They're two of the busiest roadways we have in Eden Prairie. So we just want to preserve that opportunity for a future council, to at least engage a developer in trying to do something very nice down there. And if and when that road goes in, there will be ample opportunity to engage the neighborhood on the design, how trees can be saved, or mitigation can be included in the project, and also for the city council to weigh in on it. So those decisions will have opportunities for public input in the future, but if we don't preserve the right-of-way now, then we've lost an opportunity for not only this project, but for other redevelopment that will happen at some point in the future in this area.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the guide plan from regional commercial to high-density residential on 2.58 acres, and amending the comprehensive plan text to include a land use category allowing over 40 dwelling units per acre, and adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on 2.58 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and a zoning district change from rural to RM-2.5 on 2.58 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second?
Including the charging station. Including the charging station.
Can the mayor add too, because the mayor mentioned the charging station, so there are, and they're in the staff report, there are a number of commission, minor commission revisions, so Sherry captured that in her motion, but the charging station, I think there were some comments that you see in the report related to a compact car stall, a tree protection around a particular tree number, moving a blue spruce, and then at the end as well, to, which may eliminate the tree replacement waiver. If you stop the caliper inches at 119 inches, then there would be a pavement, a payment into the tree fund as updated in your prior ordinance that might eliminate that waiver. So that would all come back at second reading.
All right. We had a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims?
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're excited to see it.
Yeah, we really are, we need it. Thank you.
Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens?
Aye.
Any other business being before the council?
Maybe, Mayor, one announcement, that our next meeting would normally be the first Tuesday in February 6th, but that's being moved to Monday, February 5th, due to statewide precinct caucuses and city not being able to or should not conduct business on that evening. So the next meeting is Monday, February 5th.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned.